Okay, that's seven. Okay, let's call to order the Narragansett Town Council Regular Meeting. Today is Monday, June 19th, at 7:00 PM. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is a motion to accept and place on file the minutes of the May 1st, 2023 Town Council Regular Meeting.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion by Councilor Lawler, second by Councilor Kopeck, motion passes 5-0. Next on the agenda, we have a proclamation in celebration of Juneteenth. As we know, today, the governor signed into law, Juneteenth being a holiday for Rhode Island. But for now, I would like to read the proclamation in celebration. So whereas on January 1st, 1863, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, setting in motion the end of slavery in the United States, and whereas the Civil War ended with the surrender of General Lee at Apotham X. Courthouse on April 9th, 1865, and whereas this news reached Texas when Union General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston Bay with Union troops. It was on June 19th, 1865, that he announced, "The people of Texas are informed that, in accordance with the proclamation from the executive of the United States, all slaves are free." And whereas celebration of the end of slavery, which became known as Juneteenth, is the oldest known public celebration of the end of slavery in the United States. And whereas Juneteenth commemorates African-American freedom and celebrates the successes gained through education and greater opportunity. And whereas, on a larger scale, celebration of Juneteenth reminds each of us of the precious promises of freedom, equality, and opportunity, which are at the core of the American dream. Now, therefore, we, the Town Council of the Town of Narragansett, do hereby proclaim that June 19th, 2023, is a day to celebrate Juneteenth. Thank you. So as you know, we follow the state holiday schedule, so we are having the meeting today, but the holiday for Rhode Island takes effect in 2024. Okay, next, we will move along to the Town Manager's Report. Mr. Tierney?
Good evening, members of the council and the public here and at home. With sadness, I'm informing you of the sudden passing of Pete Russo, a long-term DPW staff member. And the town, on behalf of the town, we offer our condolences and sympathy to his wife, Patricia, and their family. The paddle sports business concession from Narrow River was put out to bid again, as we had no responses to the first two. The bid opportunity closes on July 5th at 11 o'clock. We changed the dollar amount in there, so it will be the council's decision when they come in, which I'll order if we get the responses, so that we could get more people to submit. Staff has been busy implementing the Town Council Directors' recent approvals. We just learned last week that the House and Senate bills authorizing the Town of Narragansett to sell abandoned parcels at the fair market value was passed and takes effect upon passage. Narragansett Fire Department held their annual end-of-the-school-year visit to the fire department by the second-grade class from Narragansett Elementary School. It's become a tradition that they visit the fire station for some interactive demonstrations and a tour. About 50 members of the second-grade class came to see the fire trucks, meet our firefighters, and see some fire safety demonstrations and educational activities. It is a big hit every year. Soon, I'll be submitting to the council a professional services proposal for the design of the modifications at Town Hall, which would include, which is funded through the American Rescue Plan Act and bond funds. This will improve the ADA accessibility issues, the facade of the building, and other windows and other developments that need to be done. And that's about it.
Thank you. Next, moving along to open forum public comment. Open forum public comment is a time for any member of the public to speak on a topic that's not on tonight's meeting agenda. A sign-in sheet is available to members of the public who wish to speak during open forum public comment, and is located at the table to the back of the council chambers. Speakers will be called in the order that they appear, as they appear on the sign-in sheet. Before open forum public comment is closed, members of the public who did not sign up will be given the chance to speak. Speaking in a meeting during an open forum public comment is limited to three minutes. Speakers are required to state their name and address before speaking, and are expected to conduct themselves in an orderly and respectful fashion. The comments of citizens accessing this portion of the meeting are neither adopted nor endorsed by the body, but heard as requested. So again, any item that's not on the agenda, anyone can discuss, have public comment on that, we welcome you. And again, you need to state your name, and that includes the town that you live in. Mr. Tierney is getting the list.
First one is Hannah Winigret.
Okay.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to be heard. I live at 19 Earl's Court, Narragansett. I'm a lifelong resident, at least in the summer of this town, so that's 63 years before that, my parents and my grandparents were also. And I have, I hope I can talk fast enough. The sand that the town bought, that was supposed to have been delivered to the beach on or about May 10th, according to staff at the North Pavilion, was not delivered. They said that it was because they were waiting for a storm to pass, and then nobody that I spoke to appears to remember anything about it. I sent a number of emails to Mr. Tierney, because I was concerned about that. How much was that sand paid and where to go? Now, there's a gigantic sand berm down in front of that sand castle by the Seashouse and the Dunes Club. And if you take a walk down there, it was graded, it was compacted, and it looked like an installed road, and it looked like a large quantity of sand was dumped down there. The Dunes Club just said they don't know anything about it. I'm sure they have cameras. I've spoken to Coastal Resource Management, I've spoken to the EPA. I believe that it's a crime, and I think people should take a look at it, because the sand is now washing away, and is clogging up the mouth of the river. And wherever that sand came from, it was unlawfully dumped on a public right-of-way down in front of the Dunes Club. So like, let's not conflate issues. Just like, one is where'd that other sand go, the other one is wherever this other sand went, it shouldn't have been dumped there, it was unlawfully dumped and constructed into a berm, and it should be removed. That's number one. If I have any more time, I would just like you to know that many people, Jews, Catholics, women, people of color, find a word, beginning with an M, I'll spell it, M-A-R-A-G-E-Y, that people use for cannabis, they consider it racist. So many people do that the state of Hawaii, SB 786 in 2017, passed a law acknowledging that that's a racist word, and that they weren't going to use it in public anymore. Because it was, and it was brought into the English language under terrible circumstances as well. So I would like, I've written a lot about the history of the word, I published it, I'd like to sit down with the Town Council at a later date, when I have more time, and share the history of why that word's so racist. And thank you very much for banning smoking on the beach. As a mother of seven kids, 18 grandkids, and now one grandchild, great-grandchild, I hate finding cigarette butts when the kids are digging in the sand. So I agree, no smoking, but we don't need to let non-appointed, non-elected, self-appointed people go put signs up the beach with racist language in it, because you're actually inviting any other self-appointed group of like-minded individuals to go put up their sign, and I don't think you want that.
Thank you.
Thank you, God bless.
Thank you. Next. Mr. Tierney, is there anyone else that's signed up?
Autumn Johnson.
Am I able to be heard?
Yeah, just state your name and address.
Hi, so good evening, and thank you for this opportunity for me to speak to you all. I am Autumn Rain Johnson, Ms. Wheelchair, Rhode Island, 2023, and I live on 45 Gatsby Road here in Narragansett. So I will be speaking on behalf of better beach accessibility for all, but mainly the disabled. I would like to start off with the message that I hope to leave here today, and that is beach accessibility for the disabled is accessibility for all. Providing proper beach accessibility for those who are disabled means that that would bring accessibility and help to the people of all different types of abilities. That would be minorities, people of all ages, and those in the military, or who are veterans, and their caregivers, parents with strollers, and elders. As a person who grew up living down the road from the beaches in Narragansett, and I'm still a resident of this town, I have felt excluded at our beaches due to the inaccessibility. Now that I'm a young adult who experiences life without the help of someone, I cannot go on our beaches alone. This is why I grew up going to Schoolhouse Pond, located on the Narragansett Indian Tribal lands in Charlestown, Rhode Island. We are the ocean state, and only certain beaches are making a small effort to the necessary changes for people with disabilities to enjoy our Narragansett Town Beach. Narragansett Town Beach is a town beach, so as far as I know, there's no need for state approval for the necessary changes. This means that they should be more accessible. The big inflatable wheelchairs are impossible to get around on because of the other beachgoers already set up on the beaches. And then, once I am wet from the water, it's hard for me to get back into that chair, especially with, even with the help of two or more people. Narragansett Town Beach does have a wheelchair mat, from what I've been told, but I have not been told this by the staff when I go to this beach in the past. But based on the information from my fellow wheelchair users, I've been told that those wheelchair mats only go halfway down the beach. So I am looking at, for me, I would just like to see a wheelchair mat that goes all the way down to the water. If I had more time, I would go into depth of where we could possibly get the funding and people to help us with those wheelchair mats. And I would also go into depth on information that I have of how many people here in Rhode Island are disabled, and how many people who have physical mobility issues are here in Rhode Island, and would definitely benefit from better beach accessibility. And I just feel like this is not enough, and we can do a whole lot better.
Thank you.
My name is Gerald Sharapa, 40 Woodridge Road, Narragansett. So I come here tonight for the first time as a long resident here, I live in Metta Tuxit, and I'm seeing a lot of changes in town. A lot of changes that nobody seems to know about. All of a sudden, we read about it in the paper, or it's already been passed. Multiple things like the parking bans, the changes, we want to put parking meters, we don't want to do this, we got sand, we got, you know, all kinds of issues. I also heard that there was a survey sent out to the residents of this town regarding the changes in parking. I didn't get a survey.
I didn't get one.
Okay? Then I read something else, that only 67 people got the survey. So I come here to give you a pickle. I have a long background in customer service, service excellence. If anybody knows the story of giving them the pickle, it's, you know, who are our customers? You are my customer? I'm your customer? We're all customers here in town. We live in a community where we serve each other. And it's really important that we listen to each other. So some things are, you know, I'll tell you the story of the pickle. This will make sense, I'll be quick. Jim Farrell, who owned Farrell Ice Cream Parlors, long, long time ago, he's since deceased, I had the honor of meeting him. His customer always went in and ordered a hamburger and got a pickle, and said, "I want another pickle." Well, one day, some, one of his servers said, "No, you can't have an extra pickle. I'm going to charge you, if you want an extra pickle, you're going to pay 75 cents." Well, the customer wrote him a letter and said, "If that's the way you're going to do your business, I'm never coming back." We want people to come back to Narragansett, right? We got to give them the pickle. We got to give our residents here the pickle. So I'm asking that you consider sending out surveys when there are major changes happening in town, and listen to, there's no reason that we cannot do that in today's age with social media, et cetera, et cetera. So with all due respect, may I give you the pickle?
Yes, I love pickles.
Is it dill more sweet?
Thank you.
Jim, can I ask you one question from your manager update? Because I agree, we need to make sure that the residents in the town can see government work. What is the status of the Peg TV?
I, it's still, they still haven't finished it yet.
Can we get this done? It's been months.
It's in their hands right now.
The pickle lady wants to see it on TV, let's go.
Yeah, they should be done with it soon. Dan gave me an update last week.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Tierney? Next.
Gina Durama.
Good evening, Gina Durama, 11 Fifth Avenue. Oh, I need these, sorry. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about affordable housing tonight. I know that it's been on the agenda occasionally in the past over the last year, but I was reviewing the annual reports from the committees, and I noticed that the affordable housing agenda had many suggestions and recommendations, but I haven't seen any of those put into action. And so, one of the big issues that we're having here is the balance between residents, students, retirees, I mean, the demographics of the state are getting older as we get closer. We all know that there's a housing shortage. In fact, the median housing price went up again in Rhode Island this month. And so, there's not a lot we can do about getting more people in here unless we take action. We have to take action to have families move into Narragansett. If not, we're going to lose those families, we're losing them now. But there are things that were recommended during those affordable housing meetings. So one of those is, you can't change the inventory of sale prices, you can't, you know, people can't afford to buy a house here if they're starting out, but you can regulate rentals. Oh wait, you already do that. There's a rental registration. We see how many houses in this town are rented, and how many of them are rented yearly? Not many. Do we track that information? I don't know. But I would say that of the LLCs and the trusts that are all on those rental registration forms, many of those are not yearly rentals. And wouldn't it be great if we could have an increase in inventory of yearly rentals, so families could live here? So our firefighters, our teachers, et cetera, you know the routine. But you could do that. You could do that by offering tax incentives. You could change your tax rates. I mean, if people have a rental house, and it's a business, but they're being taxed at the residential rate, maybe that's something to think about. Maybe if you rent yearly, you get a discount. Maybe there's a credit, like a homestead exemption. I just would love for you to do something about it. I mean, you all say you're here for the residents, but you got to, you got to do something, you can't just talk about it. I don't have a lot of time left, but I'll tell you one thing, we're in a residential district right now. This is the pier, it's densely populated. And in a few years, you'll have a parcel down in the pier, that'll be ready to be renovated and used for something next door to the fireplace. Wouldn't it be great to see this parcel of land be affordable housing? You could get a lot of affordable housing units right on this parcel. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Alicia Vignali Henry.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Alicia Vignali Henry. My address is 660 Point Judith Road. So I came here tonight for a few reasons. First of all, I would like to say how proud I was when I was getting my kids ready for school yesterday on a Sunday, and I realized I didn't have school today. Narragansett did not have school today to celebrate Juneteenth. I saw a member of the school committee out here, and I just think that that is an amazing thing. We are ahead of the trend. And then the proclamation you just did, Council President, really just showcases our town's commitment to being a welcoming and inclusive community, and I love it. So I also just wanted you all to know that we were very fortunate at the IDEA Committee to have Ms. Johnson, Ms. 2023 Wheelchair Rhode Island, come join us. So I am just so happy you all got to hear her story and her platform, because her perspective is going to be so valuable in so many assets and aspects of our community. So with that, I think the most important thing that I would like to say is, I have always believed that Narragansett can be a trailblazing community that ensures every single one of our policies actively reduce disparities. Everything everyone has talked about tonight when they come up, whether it was pickles, housing, Ms. Johnson, they are all capable of being looked at through a multi-dimensional equity lens. And when we do that, and we take all the suggestions, our leaders take the suggestions, the committees take the suggestions, and apply that lens, inclusion, inclusive and innovative policies will bring people together in this town, and they will show that there is plenty, plenty of room for everyone to contribute and enjoy our beautiful community. Thank you so much, have a great night.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Karen Shabshelowitz.
Karen Shabshelowitz, 63 Wander Street. I didn't think I was going to get up here tonight. First of all, I had to come over on my trike. Public transportation is always, and has been, a major issue, and nothing is being done about it to improve it, nothing. Here we have the Town Manager, who was formerly head of operations for Ripta. Have I seen any change since he became Town Manager? No. And I'm very disgusted and disappointed, because a lack of public transportation is a major barrier to citizens who don't drive, who don't have cars, and who can't even get to CVS in Wakefield or Stop &amp; Shop without hiring an expensive Uber, which many of us, including myself, do not have the money to do. As far as living in a neighborhood, I've lived at the same address since 1987, raising five of my children on that street, who have all moved on very successfully to other jobs in other towns and other states. I've been before the mic plenty of times on plenty of committees, plenty, the Bike Pedestrian Committee, the Narragansett Elementary School Steering Committee, the Peer School Formation Committee, in fact, I was the one that thought of the name, the Peer School, the High School Steering Committee, Chair of the Special Advisory Committee for 10 years, Gifted Education Committee, Senior Committee. How many times must How many times must people come up to this mic and speak repeatedly? Repeatedly, I'm improving the community and the democracy in town. It's like my kids tell me, don't go to the meetings, Mom, it's not good for your high blood pressure. My doctor said, don't go to the meetings, it's not good for your high blood pressure. Yet I see politicians up there on the stage that have made promises to be public servants. Where is your public service? Where is your moral fiber for running for school committee? And, and Joe, I see you looking at the clock, you're going to call the town sergeant over? I hope not.
Okay. That's all we have signed up right now.
Yeah, you can, if you'd like to come up, yeah, just state your name and address, please.
My name is Heather Geary. I am a new resident of Narragansett, and I'm actually here to make a statement on my partner's behalf. I'm going to read his statement. Council members and fellow residents, my name is Zach Bastian, and I am a Narragansett resident at two hundred Clark Road, a paraplegic and a person who has become the man I am today because of the access to the shore in Narragansett. I grew up in South Kingstown, closer to Narragansett Town Beach than South Kingstown Town Beach. In the summertime, the town beach and pier were my second home. Just yesterday, on Father's Day, I came down to the beach to recall memories of my late father, specifically the memory I have of him pushing me on a surfboard into my very first wave at six years old. Fourteen years later, as a young man living in South Kingstown and newly paralyzed, I began surfing adaptively to overcome my injury and adapt to my disability. This beach has forged the person I am twice, once as a child and again as an adult with a new disability. I still surf adaptively in Narragansett all year round. This spring, for the first time, I have enjoyed teaching friends with disabilities to surf the way I do at Narragansett Beach, where it is easy and more appropriate for teaching new surfers. This beach means the world to me, the ability to share it with others and who it may affect, and may it affect in the same way as it has on me. I hope that the town council and my neighbors will work to be an inclusive community that does work towards restricting access to our beaches and shoreline. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have time for one more comment, Ms. Celeberto?
Catherine Celeberto, forty-eight, rolls caught in Narragansett. There was a public notice in the paper. Evidently, the notice said petition by the town to, to the CRMC to construct a roof over the deck of the clubhouse, the beach clubhouse. It asked for a number of variances from CRMC to do this. Petition by the town, that's what it said. Now, during COVID, Ms. Kershaw asked the town council to approve her request to give a two hundred eighty-two thousand dollar no-bid contract to Abcor to construct this roof over the deck of the clubhouse. The town, last town council voted against it. So I called CRMC because I wanted to know who in the town submitted this petition. It appears that it was Ms. Kershaw who submitted this petition twice, once in two thousand and twenty-two and once in a few months ago. So there was a hearing last week, I didn't get a chance to attend. But my question is, where is the oversight? How does Ms. Kershaw, department director, just go to the CRMC and ask for a number of variances? To me, the town manager should have submitted this, or maybe the town council. I'd like to know if the town manager even knew about it, did the town council know about it? Bottom line is this, this to me is just an end run around what was already rejected. This was discussed at a town council meeting during COVID on a Zoom meeting. It's, in my opinion, and others too, a ridiculous expenditure that will never recoup the cost of. But importantly, she submitted a petition to the CRMC and asked for a number of variances to, to do this project when the project had already been rejected. And where's the oversight? Again, where's the oversight? My second thing is this, at the last, at the last meeting, I said the Recreation Advisory Board voted to restrict the north parking lot to residents only. I guess they weren't the ones that voted to do that. Must have been the town council, I'm not quite sure who, but I do know the north parking lot has been restricted in the past to residents only. Thank you.
Thank you. Coming on to seven thirty, so that's the public hearing decision portion of our meeting. Before we move on to this, I just wanted to, just for some housekeeping for the council. In the, lately, there's been a lot of abstentions from voting. And I know that, you know, the reason, the only reason that we should be abstaining from voting is if there's a conflict. I know we were elected, there's a lot of really difficult pressing controversial issues coming up. And I think it's important that we vote yes or no on these so that our, our residents know how we stand on these issues. And I know sometimes we may not agree with the whole agenda item of the motion, but simply, it's basically you have to vote on the motion as is. So simply just saying no and just giving a quick reason why, I think is, is acceptable. But again, just please don't abstain from votes. You know, it's yes or no votes for a lot of these issues. If there's an abstention, it should be for conflict of interest. Thank you. So next, we, are you all set for, okay. So next, we have, for the public hearing, we have a motion to schedule a public hearing acting as the renewal, Urban Renewal Board of Review for Class B Victual Limited Alcohol License for Narragansett Casino LLC, doing business as Narragansett Casino, located at eleven Pier Marketplace, Narragansett, Rhode Island, and refer the application to the Planning Board for Recommendation. So I have a motion?
I'll move the motion.
Okay. All in favor? Actually, so we're going to schedule it. So all applications for new alcohol licenses require a public hearing and a butter notification of the public hearing by the applicant. The staff recommendation for the hearing date is August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
No.
Oh, no. Oh, so we have three. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
This is for scheduling? This is just, okay. So one no or two no, a can?
I voted.
Counselor Ferandi?
Aye.
You said aye, okay. All right, so motion by Counselor Cicely Bonano, second by Counselor Lawler. Motion passes for one. So the, the hearing will be August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Next on the agenda is a motion to open and hold a public hearing for the purpose of considering zoning amendments to Chapter seven thirty-one of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Narragansett entitled Zoning, specifically Sections two point two, Definitions six point three, prohibited uses, and new Section seven point two two, retail sales of marijuana. So moved. Do I, a motion, do I have a second?
I'm a little baffled, can I, a point of order. Do we not take public, public expression on a, on a hearing?
Yeah, so scheduling, there's no, no public comment on scheduling. We don't do.
I thought we've had.
Well, in the past, no, we don't, we haven't with this council. We don't need to.
No, we, we've done it here.
We're not, though.
Because.
We don't, it's a schedule, the, the council's deciding the date. Well, I don't understand why, it's, it's not up for anyone to decide what date we schedule this. It's for the council to schedule. So moving, so.
Can I, can, is that, is that correct? I guess we're asking counsel.
Yeah, maybe, ask the attorney.
Or solicitors.
It's in the purview of the council.
It's just a different practice, so we'd like to know.
Okay.
Because in the past, we have taken comments.
It's at the discretion of the town council president.
Is there something that will, I mean, I'm really confused.
So there's no need to take, we don't need to take public comment, we're scheduling something. The comments can come when we have the public hearing. That's, that's the interpretation.
I, I don't have any reference that tells me specifically when we've done this, but I know we have, and I know we have done it this year. So, I mean, I can go back and check, but.
That's fine, but.
Then can we just, is there some way that we can just put this aside until we have that answer? I mean, I'm really surprised.
I'd like to pull the agenda item, and I, I don't think we'd have to pull the agenda.
It sounds like Mark's given us the answer, it's, it's her discretion. I mean, I know that, that also later on, we have a second reading. And it is also the town council president's discretion whether or not she wants to receive comments at that point in time. It's, it's her discretion.
So we can say yes sometimes and no other times?
No, so going forward, and then this has been like the practice, so there's no need to do public comment on scheduling. It doesn't make sense to have comment on scheduling a meeting when we have the date that's been proposed and it's, it's a recommendation. So I don't understand why we would have to have comment on that. It's, it's not for the public to comment on when we're going to schedule our meetings.
But this is a public hearing. Okay.
It's a public hearing for, for the hearing, not for scheduling.
It's just a different practice.
Yeah, so, okay, so then let's go back. Motion to open and hold a public hearing for the purpose of considering zoning amendments up to Chapter seven thirty-one of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Narragansett entitled Zoning, specifically Sections two point two, Definitions six point three, prohibited uses, and new Section seven point two, retail sales of marijuana. So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, council president.
Excuse me, they need to vote on opening.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Good evening, council president, members of the council. Before I get started, I want to tell you that the words marijuana and cannabis are used interchangeably throughout this presentation and the ordinance. If, given the, what you heard in open forum, you want to direct us to only use one particular term, I'm sure we can make those changes later on. And we offer, we hope there's no hard feelings. So moving on, a little background. The town zoning ordinance currently regulates medical marijuana. We put that ordinance in place a couple of years back. But then in May of last year, the General Assembly adopted the Rhode Island Cannabis Act, which made recreational use of marijuana legal, but subject to local regulation. On November eighth last year also, the Narragansett voters passed a referendum approving the legal sales of cannabis and cannabis products. In total, twenty-five communities throughout the state also approved the retail sales of cannabis products. Under the Rhode Island Cannabis Act, local regulations may impose reasonable safeguards on the operation of cannabis establishments, provided they are not unreasonable and impracticable and not in conflict with the statute. Municipalities are authorized to govern the time, place, and manner of cannabis establishment operations. In the past few months, community development staff has worked closely with the building official, the fire marshal, and the assistant town solicitor to draft the ordinance we'll be presenting to you tonight. And what we, in summary, what we are intending to propose is that cannabis, retail cannabis sales be allowed in BB zones, BB is our general business zone, with certain restrictions. And so that means that not every lot in every BB zone is, would be allowed or able to accommodate cannabis sales. And key to that entire proposal is that it would be allowed only by special use permit. Would not be allowed by right in any individual location anywhere, special use permit only. So now I'm going to show you a brief presentation that summarizes the ordinance as drafted. Maybe. Help me, Caleb. That's a good spot to start, thank you. So the ordinance, I'm not going to read all, all the language of the, of the ordinance to you. However, I do want you to see one of the key definitions. As you can see in white on the screen, there are seven definitions being added to our zoning ordinance. Cannabis cultivator, cannabis product manufacturer, the others at the bottom. What we're talking about today is just one of them, and that is cannabis retailer or marijuana retailer. And what it says is any facility, this will be the definition, any facility that may, under state law, acquire, possess, supply, or dispense marijuana and/or related supplies and educational materials, but does not cultivate marijuana on-site, included, including but not limited to compassion centers as defined in Rhode Island General Laws twenty-one, twenty-eight point six three. Provided that compassion centers that cultivate marijuana on-site shall be considered marijuana cultivation facilities, defined differently. Facilities in which marijuana is sold or dispensed for immediate on-site use or consumption shall be considered marijuana emporiums, also a separate definition. Thus, shall not include a cannabis retailer or hybrid cannabis retailer as defined herein. So point being in this definition, cannabis retail is intended, by this definition, to be essentially a marketplace where you would go in, purchase it, and leave. You wouldn't use it on-site, it wouldn't be delivered to you at home, and it wouldn't be cultivated on-site for you to purchase. So. What you're looking at here is a snapshot of the, of Section six point one, that is the prohibited uses section of the code. It actually defines where you can be allowed to do any individual activity and where you are prohibited. So the, on the column on the left, there are the definitions, the seven definitions we just talked about. In this case, the one we're discussing in detail tonight is marijuana retail facility or cannabis retail facility. And as you can see, it's intended to be allowed by special use permit in the BB zone, based on information in Note One. And Note One says to refer to, to the new subsection seven twenty-two, which I'm about to present to you. So the idea here is that we will have certain standards. The first set of standards are negative standards, what can't you do? So, and I've highlighted some certain phraseology, so I'm, I'm going to just paraphrase it. Item A one at the top of the screen says that you cannot be located within five hundred feet of any school of any type except post-secondary school, so colleges. It can't be located within five hundred feet of schools, preschools, licensed daycare centers, houses of worship, parks, play fields, and playgrounds. Another negative regulation would be that marijuana retail facility cannot be located within two thousand feet of any other marijuana retail facility. Then, moving down, there were three sets of setback requirements. Setbacks, as you know, are distance requirements similar to the ones above, but they have to do with how the property is constructed on-site. So setbacks for lots adjacent to residential zones. If a commercial lot that complies with this is suggested for use as a marijuana retail and it's directly adjacent to a residential property, the building has to be set back a hundred feet from that property line. And fifty feet of that has to be planted with evergreen vegetation. If it is adjacent to a commercial zone, another commercial zone, then the standard commercial setbacks are employed, but there is a requirement, as you can see at the bottom of the screen, for at least a minimum of ten-foot wide vegetated buffer. So those are the negative requirements. The positive requirements, these are the things that must happen. So the first thing is that they have to be located within a mile of Route One. They have to have frontage on Rhode Island Route one oh eight. Lot width to be two hundred foot minimum, lot area one hundred, one acre max, a minimum. Lot width to be 200-foot minimum, lot area 100, 1 acre max, minimum. And these are, the 200-foot minimum in the area are larger than the standard requirement in the BB zone. Parking is the standard parking for retail, 5 and 1/2 spaces for every 1,000 square feet. Hours of operation would be 10:00 a.m. through 6:00 p.m., so not open late into the evening. And the last is that there has to be a security measures report or documentation submitted to the town before a permit could be issued. The process of approval, very similar to any other process, any other proposal that requires special use permit. So it has to go to the planning board first for site plan review. That's what we say at the top of the screen here. And again, we're reinforcing what I just told you a moment ago. Three key standards are that the requested use must be sufficiently buffered in relation to any residential uses in the vicinity. The area exterior appearance should be consistent, of course, that's subjective, but consistent with the exterior appearance of existing structures in the immediate area. And that lighting is provided to illuminate the facility. Certainly, lighting is very key to security measures at all times of the day. And at the end, bottom, is kind of a belt and suspenders, the facility has to be fully licensed by the town and under the state, under the laws of the state of Rhode Island, which goes without saying. One of our councils has asked for a map. And so this map is of the center of town, and I'll point out a few landmarks for you. First, there's Route 1 cruising through town. That's the entire amount of Route 1 that is in the town of Narragansett. This is Salt Pond Plaza. This is the Washington Trust Bank. There's the Rotary. This is that stretch of Point Judith Road with the gas station, the car wash, all those things. All these items in gray, all these areas in gray are zoned BB. With the exception of the two medical buildings at the Rotary, they are zoned BA. They would not qualify. But everything in gray is zoned BB. Everything in yellow, tan, off-white is zoned residential, and the red is zoned industrial. So the only areas that would be qualified for this, for the placement of a marijuana retail facility, would be these gray areas inside this half-mile line from Route 1. This is a half-mile radius. So, not in any of the residential zones. For anybody who's watching, even though there is plenty of residential area inside that line, we're not allowing it there. We're proposing that it be allowed only in the BB zone, only by special use permit, which involves going to the planning board for site plan review, and then zoning board to receive a special use permit. Both, the zoning board meeting is a full public hearing. So that's, that is the end of my presentation. I'll take questions.
Thank you. Questions from the council?
I have two. Do we know if anybody is actually interested in getting licensure for this?
I have not known, I have not heard of any applicants to date. I would imagine they are waiting for the regulations to be ratified.
So, essentially, the, in this last legislative morass, in the last week or two, the three nominees for the Cannabis Commission have been nominated, and then either have been approved or about to be approved. The reason why the law passed a year ago and nothing's really happened is because you need the Cannabis Commission to essentially run things, and so they haven't been in place. So, I expect, once that commission gets in place, that the license will start rolling out.
My second question was, one of the, the only thing that I saw, I mean, I think this is fine in every respect. The one thing that I was just confused, or just, you know, curious about, was that in that same area, there's a liquor store that's open until 10 o'clock at night. So why did we make this different from the liquor store requirement?
That issue was debated by the planning board. It started out, I believe, if I had to go back into my notes, my memory of my notes, we looked at several other communities, ordinances. There were several communities ahead of us in the process of doing this. East Greenwich, South Kingstown, North Kingstown, a couple others. And I believe most of them had 10:00, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., or at least a few of them had 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. as the limited time limits. We wanted to be as closely parallel to them, but there were discussions made at the planning board, by planning board members, about the prospect of paralleling liquor stores and allowing them, allowing the retail marijuana facilities to stay open till 10 o'clock, or whatever the time is that a town, this town, allows liquor stores to be open. So that was debated. It came down to, the majority felt as though the proposal of 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. was preferable.
And Deb, one of the thoughts is that in Zone 4, in the zone that we're in, there's only, there's only going to be four licenses issued.
Right.
Of that, obviously, only one, if any, are going to come to Narragansett. The thought of putting, it's almost like when we did the FAR, the thought of putting a reasonable restriction and a reasonable timeframe, it's easier for the count, for a future council to, for that one applicant to come back in two, three years and say, it should be 10 to 8.
And you just modify it then?
Rather than, it would be impossible to go backwards.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, we had a set of reasonable time, 10 to 6. Frankly, it's, I don't want to say it's a guess, but that seems to be what other communities are doing. If a license does get issued here, and there is, there would be one business person, if they came before a future council, you would be able to expand that.
How many towns are there in the zone that has four?
Mike, that's all of South County, correct?
It's essentially all of Washington County.
Washington County.
Oh, good, okay. Thank you.
You know, and I don't, I don't know if Block Island's going to get one, you know?
Yeah, probably not. Probably not. Yeah, so I just, I'm sorry. Are you? Okay. Just a quick question, Mr. DeLuca. So, just looking at the, it is called the Rhode Island Cannabis Act. I'm just curious why in the ordinance, it's, it is marijuana. And I don't know if that was an oversight, or if it could, is, was that intentional?
It's not an oversight, because the definitions that I put up on the first screen, and you have the full definitions in your packet, those came from the state law also. So the state law uses the term marijuana and cannabis interchangeably. We just basically copied it. But if it's, if it's of, if the council is of the mind to want to change all the references to marijuana to cannabis, unless the solicitor feels as though that would cloud the description of it all, it's a very easy change.
Yeah, I would recommend against it, because again, we mirrored state law. I don't want someone coming in later and saying, you're referencing this, but I have a license for that.
That's fine, so there was thought, that I just, yeah, that's the only thing that I wanted to put on the record.
We didn't make it up.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
It was tough for us, by the way, because we kept seeing the change as we're going through the law. The state law is very long.
Right.
Would have been nice if they had been consistent.
I know, thanks. Councilor Lammer?
So I watched the planning board meeting, I think, three times, because I wanted to make sure I had a really good understanding. And a couple of questions for both of you. The state is telling us that we have to have it in a reasonable location near a state highway. They're not telling us Route 1, correct? Because I know there was discussion in the planning board meeting about Route 1 or Route 1A.
Yeah.
So it's up to the council to decide where that would be. So, I know that South Kingstown was discussed at the meeting as well. You mentioned that, I believe it was North Kingstown, South Kingstown, Exeter, East Greenwich, that you mirrored, mirrored this off of. And the majority of those did end up with a BB zone. But I thought one interesting conversation that you had was that South Kingstown, next door to us, decided to use the industrial zone. And so they went ahead and they put their retail unit into the industrial zone. So I was wondering if you could show us, if we were to say 1A, that would bring us up to the north where we have the university, we have, where we have the industrial park. Is that something that, I believe that's something that I'd like for us to discuss, because it would also be accessible? Because I mean, I listened to, like, your remarks about having ease of access to anyone who would go there, and it would certainly be ease of access off of state highways, and would seem to comply with what the state goal is. But for the residents, I know this did pass, it passed by 367 votes, so certainly not overwhelmingly, but it did pass, so we do need to have it in town. But I'm just wondering if it might be better placed in the industrial park, like the town next to us did. And they also did reduce the hours from 10 to 5 in South Kingstown, right? Correct?
Well, that's interesting. We did debate that also, even at the staff level, before we brought it to the town planning board. The reason we suggested going to the business zone is not just because the majority of the other communities did the same, but because the business zones are more, are appropriately targeted for retail use, the industrial zones are not. And so it would be a vast departure from the type of uses that you get in industrial zones, to put it in an industrial zone. That's the logic. In short, there was a lot more discussion, I assure you. Also, that the South Ferry Industrial Park is much further from Route 1. And why we're talking about proximity to Route 1 is, as Solicitor Marcelo mentioned, the, there will only be a maximum of four of these in the entire south half, south quarter of the state. And so it wouldn't just be retail for Narragansett residents. This would be retail for a large section, a large region, and we would anticipate that it would make sense to have something that's going to be accessed, accessed by people from all over the state, to be close enough to the major highways, so that they do not have to travel so far into our town to find the retail center.
But there was a good amount of discussion about 1A as well, though, correct, in the planning board meeting? So I'm just, I'm just putting it out there for us to discuss, because it seemed like a different, a different approach that we could take, that sounds like it was a good fit for next door.
Understood.
Thank you. Councilor Ferandy?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. DeLuca. So if I have it right, it's just Route 108 at this point?
Yes.
One mile either side, so a half-mile on each side of Route 1. Is there other business zone entities south of Route 1? You know, if you go south, I mean, I'm sorry, south of 108, south on 108, or, you know, going by Scarborough Beach, I know there's Cumberland Farms, there's a couple of positions there, would they be available there?
They would be south of the black line, so no. Not if this ordinance is passed as drafted.
As drafted, okay. And if it was just in, if it was changed to be just in the industrial zone itself, just a thought. Because, you know, we're only going, there's going to be four in, I guess, six different towns, possibly. Probably the chances of having two in one is, we don't know what the future's going to hold after that. We're kind of looking at it as, you know, retail, which means, you know, big box, all that kind of stuff. But at this point, there's going to be, lack of a better word, four lucky, or, you know, whatever it's going to be. It's going to be a captive market, let's say. So, the retail aspect of it and the convenience aspect of it, I think, when you have a limited amount of these initially right now, and you're, you know, trying to look to where you want to put it, the retail aspect doesn't necessarily have to come into place where it maybe should be, like, right off the highway or something like that. Now, the industrial area I can see there isn't that far, but they're going to have a captive market, so people are going to find it. I mean, if you look at that industrial, it's only another block down the road. I don't know if that lends itself, but, you know, that would be my opinion to have it in that industrial zone only at this point. I don't know if anybody else would agree, but it's something to consider. I don't know if the board ever considered that.
Well, we did identify where the industrial zones are in town, and, you know, there's just the two that we know of, Walt's Way and the area around South Ferry, South Ferry Park. The, and of course, Galilee, but that's zoned completely different. So, we looked at that. We thought about, you know, what kinds of impacts would be on the town to have traffic being attracted to those areas that have heavy truck traffic. Oftentimes, if you're up and down Walt's Way, there are times when there are large trucks out in the road, waiting to either load or unload, offload, or whatever. There, it's a whole different dynamic in an industrial park. So that added to the concern we had about them being a little bit more remote and not being already set up for retail sales. So, we leaned more towards the business zoning areas. That was our rationale.
Right, but also, you know, it's 2,000 feet. That area encompasses more than 2,000 feet, probably within that. You might be, have to be able to put two in one of those areas. I don't know if it's possible. Right now, there'll only be one, but let's say down the road, as it, if it becomes more common, and it's, the state opens up more licenses and whatnot. I think it's just defining it into two different spots, at least with the other industrial parks as one in separate ends of the town. And actually, is that about a half-mile from Route 1, that whole area of 1A also, or?
It's a little further than that. If you're talking about South Ferry Industrial Park, as the crow flies to Route 1, it's got to be a mile and a half anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, maybe, not that far, maybe about a mile.
And Steve, if, again, there is an option to put it in an industrial park.
Right.
I invite you to go to Warwick, and their initial, their marijuana store is in a, call it, almost an industrial building. What occurred because of that is parking issues, there's lines out into the parking lot because of security reasons. You want to be able to have ample parking, you want to be able to have ample queuing of people. So, if a store like this goes into an industrial zone, you have the, as Mike said, the general retail issues, the parking, the screening, the traffic, the ability to queue people in and out on some of these buildings. For instance, I say Clipper Seafood, that's vacant. You know, if you ever went to Clipper when it was open, you know, there's no place to park. So, if by putting it in an industrial zone, you have those normal, I'll call it retail issues that come about, and plus with security concerns on some of these stores, they can only let a certain number of people in.
Right, I know that.
So what you have is people standing in line in the parking lot, which, if there's ample enough parking, they wouldn't have to do that, or if the store was big enough for screening. So, one of, that was one of the discussions, both with the fire marshal. It had to do with that type of operational issues, too.
But isn't it true that if, let's say it's in that Salt Pond Plaza, let's say, isn't it true that potentially someone could want to rent entire marshal's area, marshal's conveni, the store? You know, as far as they could rent it, so that would be a big facility, it would be similar to the situation of, you know, an industrial park kind of overbuilding. I mean, anybody, it's, we don't have any control of Salt Pond Shopping to say, okay, someone wants to come in and rent, I have a lot of extras. If they can pay more money for that, that whole building, or that whole section, they might buy it. And then where are we? I just want to make sure the safeguards, is there anything about the size of the facility? You know, is there any limits of how, how big it could be?
We did not put that into draft, didn't see it in any of the other ordinances, but it's not something that we could, couldn't look back and take another look at.
I mean, we really don't know, I mean, I know it's legal, I get it, and we really know where it's going.
To my knowledge, no, I can, I'll check Pawtucket and Central Falls. To my knowledge, limiting the size of the facility is not something we can do. But I will check with Pawtucket. They're the, probably the biggest. All the rest were either pre-licensed, which was Pawtucket, I mean, which was Providence, Warwick, Portsmouth, and then the new one came in in Exeter. But, to my knowledge, size, I didn't see anything in the statute that would allow us to regulate the size of the facility. However, the bigger the facility, the more parking, et cetera, you know, that's, that's what those safeguards are there for.
What I'm getting at is, I think it would be easier in the Salt Pond Plaza to have a larger facility, because you have the parking and you have the entrance and exit. So, you know, we may be looking at something like that. So that's the only reason why I'm bringing into the, I know, the industrial parks might not be as conducive, as you say, can we just, we don't think of them like that? And I know the, where is it, Jefferson Boulevard, is that the one in Warwick? It's kind of a, it's not really...
Exactly, so that's what you would get if you're not in a, if you're in a non-retail area, is you get that, a non, essentially... get that, a non, essentially the use isn't conducive to any retail, it's not just marijuana.
But we couldn't stop Salt Pond if they wanted to take a block of stores and say, you know, you can rent the whole thing, or the TJ Maxx, or the old Marshalls, whatever it was. We can't control that either, so. And then it's in one area of the town. So we could potentially have one big one. I'm just looking at different alternatives possibly, so it's not just in one area, and maybe there's a potential. I don't know what anybody else thinks, but.
We can look into, just being very clear as to whether or not that element is regulatable at the local level. The state law says we can regulate the time, place, and manner. We're going to need to get a little more definition on that.
Any other council members have any comments or questions? Okay, anyone from the public? Ms. Shep Shalowicz.
Karen Shep Shalowicz, 663 Wander Street. I'm hard of hearing, so I might have missed some of the explanation. I have a question. Living on Wander Street, I'm a block away from Narragansett Avenue. What about places that are grandfathered?
Karen, we got to see who are you in, I'm sorry. Normally, the stenographer does it, but here we do it. So can you raise your right hand? Because it's a public hearing, I'm sorry. Try the, yes, the other right. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, thank you, sorry.
What about places that might be grandfathered in that are already exception to the rules? What about Narragansett, Pia Village? And what about if the next town council comes and changes the rules or whatever? Is that going to lead to, I'm totally against cannabis, totally against marijuana, is that going to lead to opportunities for opportunists or people that are pro-pot, pro-marijuana, pro-cannabis to open stores on Narragansett Avenue or within Pia Village? Because some of those places might be grandfathered in.
Yeah, I don't know the answer. I'm just saying, like, we're making the, this ordinance, so I'm going to defer to.
Yeah, so under this ordinance, Pia Village is, it's prohibited in Pia Village. However, it would be prohibited anyway because we have a library there and you have the radius. So part of the, it's prohibited in Pia Village under this ordinance.
And no exemptions to the rule because of grandfathered in or?
We're doing this now so no one gets grandfathered in because the licenses haven't been issued yet.
But can they change that with the next council?
Any future council can go through the process and change the zoning. If they wish to amend the ordinance, they can do that in the future.
And how about like businesses that are already located on that one block on Narragansett Avenue? Like there's a gasoline station, what if that would cause, it's not a gas station, it's a mechanical repair shop. Could they do something there because it has a certain rating?
It's not in the correct zone, no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Amoruso, 111 West Bay Drive. Hello.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Oh, I do.
All right, thanks.
I have very little to say, but I know the state law, the terms are interchangeable. And I didn't realize that cannabis is acceptable and the other one is not, I don't even want to say it, that it is highly offensive to people. So even though the state makes it interchangeable, I think in our labeling of the maps, I know it's small things, but to a very large number of people, which I was unaware of until I Googled it tonight, this is really a hot button issue. So I don't see why, as a town, we can't just put cannabis and that's it and just leave it like that. So I'm sure the state, if it's interchangeable, that means it's interchangeable. So I just think we have to take people's feelings into account, and it does have a long history. So this is not some new thing. So I think that would be the best thing for this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Saliberto?
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Kathryn Saliberto, 48 years, caught in Narragansett. First 500 feet from a playground or a school. You know how close 500 feet is? Visualize it. It's five houses down. That's all it is. That's way too close. This 500 feet would allow a retail store on Boone Street. Boone Street between Rodman and Congdon is all BB. The playground is, you know, say here, and the next corner, Rodman and Boone, where that empty lot is, is more than 500 feet from the playground. So this 500 feet is way too narrow a distance, I think. Second, it does not say library in 1B. Okay? It says park, house of worship preschool, yada, yada. Does not say library. That has to be put in if that's what you want to do. The other, the other thing is, how many of these rules could be waived by the zoning board? Could somebody come in and say, I want like a variance, I'm, say we change it to 1,000 feet, I want a variance to change it to 800 feet. This 500 feet has to be changed. It's way too close, okay? Way, way too short a distance. But could the zoning board give variances to any of these things that we're going to put into effect right now? Mr. Marcela? I'm not, I mean, only lawyer here, that guy's sitting back there, you know?
Yeah, the zoning board can give a variance for anything.
This is the problem, this is the problem, okay? We have a zoning board, who never saw a variance they didn't like. So I think this language has to be tightened up. You know, I have no objection to cannabis, marijuana, pot, whatever you want to call it, anything you want to do in the privacy of your own home is fine with me. But I am very concerned this is going to become a tourist draw if we have a retail store. And the applications haven't been accepted yet. That's why we don't know who, because I've asked quite a few times, what are the names of the people who are applying for these retail licenses, but they're not taking applications yet? So any event, in any event, I just think that we need tighter regulations because, again, we don't want this to become a tourist draw. We don't want the rental owners to use it as a student draw. I know when I was a student, my God, of course, marijuana wasn't legal back then, but if it was like down the street from me, I don't know, you know? I try to think, I'm semi-responsible, but, you know, accessibility and availability fuel abuse. And I know that from 30 years of working for the Department of Corrections. I just want to see this tightened. I don't want people getting variances, and the 500 feet really has to go. Thanks.
Mr. Marcela, could you, could you please, the comment about urban renewal, can you please explain why the library was left out because it's covered?
It's in the urban, it's blankedly not allowed in the urban renewal zone. So the only place we have a library is in the urban renewal zone, so there was no reason to double deny it.
And the planning board discussed this, and you all agreed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to comment? I don't see anyone else. Anyone else from the council? Final comments? Okay.
I have one more question. Mr. DeLuca, just one more question, if you don't mind. It's probably a commercial property instead of the BB, but where the rotary is, there's the new, there's the medical center, and there's a newly property behind it that was changed from, I think, residential to, it's another medical center, but it was a non-conforming use, and that was changed, I believe. Is that a BB zone or is that a commercial zone?
It's a BA zone.
BA zone.
Yeah.
By the rotary.
There's the rotary, and this gray splotch here is both medical zones, both medical buildings together. If you got up real close, you'd see it. They are zoned BA, not BB.
BA, okay. It's fine.
Okay, thank you. All right, so thank you for that. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion by Council Lawler, second by Council Kopeck, motion passes 5-0. Last on the public hearing, we have a motion to receive and accept the planning board report and recommendation related to zoning text amendments in regard to various sections of the zoning ordinance to comply with recent authorization by the electorate for retail sale of cannabis and cannabis products.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
When we get there, do you want to, suggested changes when we get to the items, Steve, or how should we handle this?
I was just looking at the agenda, I think, pardon me? Oh, it's on for, yeah, for later on.
So we're just accepting these and we can make any changes to the ordinance when we have the reading? Okay. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. So motion passed by, passed by Council Lawler, second by Council Kopeck, motion passes 5-0. Okay, that concludes our public hearing. Okay, so moving on to the agenda. Actually, you know what, there were a couple of public comment, I'm just going to open it up just for a couple more, I think there were a couple more hands before I had to change. I see Ms. Amoruso.
Hi, Susan Amoruso, 111 West Bay Drive. My thing is really quick. When I spoke a couple of meetings ago about acknowledging appreciation for the restaurants that have supported the library and fundraising events, I omitted one of our biggest library supporter restaurants that was with us initially, and that is The Bike Stop. And I wanted to fix that because they were the very first restaurant to do this, they did it twice with pizza parties, they've done lots of raffle items, so I felt very badly about skipping over that, just going with the most recent ones. And they continue to be a huge library supporter. And then I also wanted to comment about this accessibility thing on the beach that was spoken about by someone else. And I had two sisters that were wheelchair-bound at the end, and when they visited Narragansett, it was impossible to get them to the beach. So I think this is something that should really be looked into, making the beach accessible for everyone. Because we think it's kind of accessible, but it really isn't. And I noticed the state of Georgia has these all-terrain wheelchairs now that are motorized, and they're making them available not only at their beaches, but also on their hiking trails. So they're quite capable to do a lot of these things. And Alabama has also come forward and done this. So it would be nice if we put some of our beach funds towards something like this because for many people, the ocean and getting into the ocean is a huge therapeutic, physically and mentally. So I think we should pursue this. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, what's your, I'm second. Oh, Dave, hey, I can't, I don't have my glasses, I'm sorry, Mr. Avedision, sorry about that.
David Avedision, 87, Woodward Ave. I just wanted to take a minute to talk about the parking issue you're going to talk about later, and if I should speak now or later when it comes up. But I really, I was at that meeting where they gave you a list of suggestions to talk about tonight and the ordinance that you're possibly changing. Those were, those were a list of suggestions they would not, they would not, they would not amend it, okay? And I think that you should really look harder, harder yourselves in that, in that ordinance about what you're trying to do in this town. Are you really residents first, or is this for a select group of residents? I really don't hear a cry around town to really clamp down on the parking and keep everyone out. If anything, what I hear is, why not bring people in? Where are the families? Why are we chasing them away? My, I grew up in Cranston. My biggest draw coming here when I was a young kid was the beach. It's the exact reason why I live here. It's the exact reason why many other people live here. It's why many people visit here. Think of this scenario for a minute. You decide you want to go to the beach on the weekend on a hot day. You get there at 1 o'clock, you have a beach pass for the lot. It's full. Where do you turn around and go and park? Can't park on the seawall if you put that 3-hour limit there. Can't go park on Boone Street, Caswell Street, Central Street, can't go park there. Well, let's say I want to go get my paddleboard, and I want to go paddleboard down in Narrow River, go park down on Castle Drive. Oh, wait, I'm a resident, but I'm not a resident of that street. I can't park there either. At least before you go down this road to limiting parking, allow the residents of this town, from any part of this town, to park in any part of this town. My daughter, who's a high school student, wants to go study with her friend who lives in Scarborough, there are limits there of who can park there, resident limits there also. She can't park there because she doesn't have a resident sticker to do that either. So what are we trying to do here? If we really care about these, the residents of town, why not allow the residents, like they do in many other towns, park on any street in this town? And then figure out if you need more parking. That would probably ease up some of the congestion you have at the beach if residents could probably park on any street in this town. And I also believe, to piggyback on what other people say, the beach needs to be more accessible. If you really want to put some signs on the seawall, how about creating some handicap-accessible parking spots on the seawall instead of putting spots aside for the Coast Guard House? It really makes sense to put some handicap signs up, handicap parking only on the seawall before you do anything else. Thank you for the time, and I hope you consider some of these comments. Thank you.
Yep, Ms. Kelly?
Hi, Lori Kelly, 44, Ocean Road. Madam President, I'm sure this is an oversight, but never have I been here when the applicant for a public hearing hasn't been asked if that date is acceptable to them. By not allowing the public to speak, I couldn't comment on this at all. I haven't been notified by staff, and now, you know, something could be up with that date. So I think if you don't want to take, you know, commentary from the public on a scheduling, which we've always done, then that's your right, but you should at least talk to the applicant. And on that, I do object to it being the 21st. You know how long we've been trying to get this done. August is another two months away. To make this application, we had to file and carry insurance for alcohol, which I bet you can understand how expensive that is. And now there's going to be another, you know, it'll be three months that we will be carrying this insurance without even a hearing. And I know everyone's backed up and, you know, we have the planning board, et cetera. But I just want you to understand that the business in this town, getting small business licenses, I know there's another restaurant in the pier that's trying to come forward, it's very onerous with the bureaucracy. And I just want to make the council aware of that. It is not an easy process. Thank you.
Thank you. I wasn't aware that it was an issue, but that was the date that the staff picked, so. Okay, so anyone else? I think I see one more person. Okay.
I don't know the name. I'm Gina Rehob. I live on 66 Fifth Ave, Narragansett, and my business is on 72 Narragansett Ave. I just wanted to talk about the parking issue, and I've been a resident here for over 30 years, homeowner, up the street and different homes around the town. My business has been here for 21 years, and I want to thank everyone here, a lot of you I know, I've seen you around town, and thank this town council and previous town councils for all you do for everyone. I know we're all going to have different opinions, and I just want to point out two scenarios. One is the letter that I wrote to you. It's a business tourist scenario. I want to drive here from another state just for the day, and I get here, I don't know where to park. I have a kind of an idea from Google what I want to do. I might want to take a surf lesson, I might want to do the yoga class, I might want to just go sit on the beach and watch the boats and the world go by. It's beautiful here. That's why. take a surf lesson, I might want to do the yoga class, I might want to just go sit on the beach and watch the boats and the world go by. It's beautiful here, that's why we're all here. If I have three hours, I'm going to come here and be extremely stressed, thinking, well, when I walk off this beach, I want to go and get a sandwich, I'm hungry. And then maybe I want to go in every shop at the pier, that's what I like to do, I like to shop. So, and then after that, I'm hungry again, I want to go to a different restaurant, right on the water. Three hours, I don't know if anyone here can do that in three hours. My second scenario is about myself, it's where I came from. I came from Central Falls, single-parent family, my mom saved every penny, worked full-time, just for gas to get here, and this was our favorite spot. We'd sit on the seawall, maybe we wouldn't even go down to the beach. I have fond memories just pulling up and seeing those historic towers. It's a beautiful spot. That's why I'm still here. I had a dream of living here, working here, and I hope other people can get here to have a little bit of time in a day. And I hope you'll consider this parking for the businesses, for the tourists, for people who are just trying to come and to see the beauty. This town is going to be here, this water, the land, longer than all of us. So whatever you're going to set up from this decision is going to have an effect on many people, not just from the town. So thank you for your time, and thank you again for all you do.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. All right, moving to consent agenda. Do I? Everyone gets like one turn to speak, so just for public, okay, you may come up for it.
Thank you, Bill Matthews, 20 Narragansett Avenue. And the reason I'm here tonight is it's about the parking. And when I heard about the three-hour change that's being considered for the curve on Narragansett Avenue, that's a problem. For all of us at 20 Narragansett Avenue, and there's 99 unit owners, there's many of us who only have one or two spots. And we depend upon that curve on Narragansett Avenue. So when I heard about this, I called up the municipal court, and I spoke to Eileen, she says, oh yeah, there's a directive, we can't issue parking passes to 20 Narragansett Avenue residents. And I, I said, well, I feel bad about that. She said, I do too. If you hold, I'll go get it and read it to you. She came back a few minutes later, and she read it, and she says, you know what, it doesn't say anything about 20 Narragansett Avenue in there. So I don't know where that, she, she didn't understand where that directive originated from. Or if it, you know, now I'm wondering, does it truly even exist? And I see you saying, no, it doesn't. And if, and if the residents at 20 Narragansett Avenue can have a parking pass on Narragansett Ave, that solves our problem. When my, when my kids come in from out of state and they stay for a week, we need that So please, consider that. Thank you.
The gentleman in the yellow shirt, I can't, I don't know your name. And then just state your name and address, please, and town.
Matthew Iñigüe, 125 Caswell Street. I'm really against the new parking restrictions, three hours is not enough time, we have visitors all summer that park on our street, there's currently no restrictions and there's no problems. I'm also against it for the seawall, there's no, this doesn't solve a problem, it just makes more. I just, it's making Narragansett look really bad, and I hate it. And as an owner and full-time resident for my to, entire life, like, I do not want to have to deal with this issue, and I do not think that we should be limiting me to have guests at my house, which currently has no restrictions, to three hours. If my family comes to the beach for the day and parks at my house and we walk to the beach from my house, we can't do that. And instead, we have to go drive to the parking lot to the beach and where we already have resident passes, but then we're making more congestion at the beach with cars, and we don't have to. And currently, there's no issues on our street at all, on Caswell Street, there's never anybody parked on my street. The only time that anybody, anybody parks on our street is during the fireworks, and that's for an hour a year. So I urge you to reconsider and not pass the parking ordinance. Thank you.
Yes.
Good evening, my name is Carolyn, do I have to raise my hand?
Just, just state your name, address, and town if you're not from Narragansett.
It's Carolyn Petraselli, Rockland Street. I wrote two emails to this council, but I only was able to connect with three people, so I'm going to stand up here and sort of repeat what I said, and also maybe add a few things. I really do believe that more work needs to be done on this issue of parking, because it raises more questions than answers. Isn't it rather late to get this going this year anyway, to get the signs made and all? I think it seems like we should get, get it right before we spend money on signs that we probably aren't going to be using until next year. What's the rush in this? I always thought that the planning board recommendations were to be used as a guide for the town council. After spending a lot of time thinking about this, I do have a few questions. Who's going to monitor this? I hope it's not the residents, because I'm not interested in being police. How do you plan to, how do you plan to manage the residence slash three-hour parking in the same spot? Will it depend on who gets there first? With three-hour limits along the seawall, it's going to push parking further back into the neighborhoods, onto streets that are not even on the list now, like Summer, Frank Low, the other part of Cogdon that runs across where the train station is. Have you considered how the dead ends portions of some of those streets on that list, where there are no turnarounds, are going to be affected? I'm opposed to these changes to just test, test it all out without further study. Personally, I don't want signs marring the view at the seawall. I think we should keep the seawall open and free, explore other options like the trolley at the, both the high school parking lots and maybe Mumford Road. Out of curiosity, I looked online to see how the trolleys run in Newport, and found that Ripta runs several of them throughout the city as early as May 26, all the way to October 31. Riding the trolley was free, thanks to funding from Discover Newport and the Episcopal, Episcopal Diocese of Rhode Island. And people can park at the Newport Transportation Center, the Gateway Center, for $5 with a Ripta voucher. Maybe we can't provide free trolleys, but why can't we do something like this on a smaller scale? Just think how many people can spend the whole day shopping, dining, going to the beach without the concern of moving their car every three hours. Has anyone ever contacted Ripta to see if they have any interest in doing this?
Three minutes is up, you have 10 seconds if you want.
I'll just wrap up. And even, even if they won't, there are other trolley options. Let's run some more workshops and get it right for next year. Thanks.
Just state your name and address.
My name is Callie Longville, and I live at 125 Caswell Street. I'd like to reiterate many of my fellow residents' concerns about the proposed parking ordinance. I think it's not solving any existing problems, but may create a new one. We don't have any public transportation that's really accessible to the beach, or even, I can't even ride my bike here, because we don't even have a bike rack. And there's no safe way to get to the beach that way either. I just, I think that there is no parking problem in the pier, there's plenty of room, there's always space in front of my house. And unlike my husband, I don't care who parks there. I have a six-car driveway. Last year at the fireworks show, it made me so happy to sit on my front porch and tell people, of course they can park on my street and go enjoy the fireworks. I think we're sending a bad message to the rest of the state about who Narragansett is welcoming to and how we want to represent ourselves. So I really urge you to reconsider this ordinance.
Last comment, the gentleman in the back in the blue shirt.
Lee Costello, 80 Rodman Street, Narragansett, Rhode Island. I live on the corner of Rodman and Caswell. I've been there for 20 years. During that time, there hasn't really been any significant problems with the parking, except for 4th of July and some of, some of the days in the summer when it gets 95 in the city and you get a lot of people. My concern, one of my concerns is that if you're, you're turning people away, obviously, that's not a good thing for the town. But my second concern is that if you limit my street or my corner to three-hour parking, my family comes in to visit, there is no place for that, for them to park after the three hours. So they will have to leave my house, find a place to park, and then come back. I know they won't be able to get a parking pass because they, excuse me, because they are not residents of Narragansett. So in addition to penalizing myself, you will be penalizing my family, because they will be unable to park for any length of time. I don't know if you've addressed that, but if you have addressed that, I would like to see, I would like to see the results of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to consent agenda, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion by Council Lawler, second by Council Kopeck, motion passes five zero. Moving on to new business, from the fire department, we have a motion to approve the annual service contract for the intraoperable radio communication system for Motorola Incorporated in the amount of $23,759.01 for the fiscal year 2023-2024, and to authorize the town manager to sign the contract after review by the town solicitor.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, all opposed? Anyone from the public wishing to comment? Motion by Council Lawler, second by Council Kopeck, motion passes five zero. Parks and Rec Department, a motion award, to award the bid for Narragansett Town Beach Carrying Capacity Study to the lowest bidder, Taylor Engineering Incorporated, in the amount of $146,777.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion, anyone, any discussion from the council? Council Kopeck?
Yes. A couple of things, I want to clarify what a carrying capacity is. The, essentially, there's generally, it is generally accepted that there are four levels of carrying capacity, and these are, we, we have, what we're, what we're voting on tonight is, is a bid that we received from an organization. I did a lot of research, looking at what they actually do for a living outside of their response. I also read the response, I thought they were an excellent choice. But I just want to make sure that folks understand what this means. So there's, like I said, there's four levels of carrying capacity. One is called physical carrying capacity, which is the maximum number of people that an area is actually able to support. And essentially, it's the maximum number that can fit on the site at any given time and still allow people to move about. This is an area that this particular study will actually do significant work on. The second is the economic carrying capacity, which relates to a level of acceptable change within the local economy of a destination locale. It's the extent to which this destination is able to accommodate functions without the loss of local activities. So, so that's the second. The third is social carrying capacity, which relates to the potential negative sociocultural impacts associated with tourism, tourism development. And this is when the social carrying capacity has been exceeded as a, as a reduced local tolerance, and there is some discussion about that here in Narragansett, so it's something that they are also going to take a look at. And the final one is the biophysical carrying, carrying capacity, which I actually think is the most important. This relates to the extent to which the natural environment is able to tolerate interference from human beings, basically. This is made more complicated by the fact that because it deals with ecology, which is able to regenerate to some extent, the carrying capacity is when the damage exceeds the habitat's ability to regenerate. And I am very curious, especially given the issues related with, with the oceans rising, et cetera, how that, how, what they're going to come up with. And it is also a heavily included part of what, what the survey is going to be about. So I just want to make sure that people understand that what the purpose of this is. It is to, it is to make it possible for us to understand the, you know, any kind of significant deterioration of the beach, and what impact that has on the town, what impact that has on the residents, what impact that has on our tourist business. So I think, I think that's very, very important. But I will say that I thought that the, that the group that we selected has, they have tremendous experience in this area across the United States and with some really significant clients. They've done a great deal of work on coastal areas, and I think from that perspective, they, they would be a strong candidate to go through all of these different issues related to carrying capacity.
Thank you. Anyone else, Council Lawler?
I don't know that I could say anything better than what Deb just said, it's, this, this study is going to be giving us the tools that we need so that we can plan for our beach over the next 10, 15 years. We need a lot of answers, and this will provide that data so that we can intelligently know the, how much, how much more dunes needs to be put on the beach, what, what more do we need to do environmentally? And this information, I believe Parks and Rec has been looking for this for about 10 years. So this is something that the REC Board had, had asked, the town council was a 5-0 vote for us to recommend for an RFP. So I appreciate this on, and I agree, Taylor Engineering certainly is the choice, not only the most economical of the two, but also it deals more with, with beach and, and recreation that we need, so some good advice will be coming our way.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention that we don't have methodology for covering the cost of this, so I'd like to know if we have any suggestions or recommendations about how we can do this, and I don't know if that's out there.
We have the enterprise fund.
The enterprise fund, I think that's what we.
We take it right from there.
Well, the, the other possibility is that we do have this relationship with Resilient Roadie, and, which gives us the opportunity to both get low-cost loans to do this, which might be a, an interesting approach to take, or to reach out particularly to the Nature Conservancy to obtain potential grants for work like this. And then, of course, there's, there's the infrastructure fund that the state of Rhode Island has gotten, I think, over a billion dollars for, and mitigation of climate change issues is part of that as well. So we want to maybe take a look at all those things as well.
Those are great, great points. Counselor Cicilline Bonanno?
So is there an answer to the funding question? Is it coming from the Beach Enterprise? Is that just the decision? Okay, so I was just curious, that was a question I had as well. You know, in looking at this company, I think they're great too, I mean, I looked at, they done work in Newport, Smithfield, they work with Narragansett Bay, and I like all the projects that they've, you know, worked on, I like the scientific data. I'm a little worried about the motion that the director has on about, you know, the crowding and the, in the motion, there are different streets that they're going to be looking at, and they're going to be doing interviews with personnel, lifeguards, and that comes away from the scientific data that we're looking at to remediate or to, you know, look at the erosion, to figure out solutions. So I just, I want to support this, but when I read this motion, it is crowding and over, you know, a non-welcoming kind of thing, are we going to lock down the beach at 5,000 and never allow any? Are we going to lock down the beach at 5,000 and never allow anybody else in? And it could impact the residents as well as the visitors. So I love this study, but I'm kind of concerned about the wording in the motion. And if the public has read the motion, it speaks to that loud and clear. Streets in the pier incorporated, the parking spots, the roads, and so I just, I'm in a conflict here. I want to support it. I think the Beach Enterprise has the money and could support it. But again, we have to get the data, and then maybe that's a bucket later on. But I don't want this study to drive out closing out the beach, limiting the capacity, and so that we say we can't allow people on the beach. So I'm a little concerned about that, although I love the company.
So the motions to award the bid to Narragansett Town Beach, that's what we're voting on. There's obviously a proposal here, and it's got a lot of great information, and that's the information that we're going to be getting from this company. It's very comprehensive. So again, the only motion that we're voting on tonight is to award the bid. And then, you know, just maybe coming up with the funding source, which, you know, Council Kopeck had some great ideas, so we can look into that, and as well as if it's an alternative using the Enterprise Fund. So those are kind of some of the suggestions I had.
Yeah, so I can vote for the study, but I'm, again, very concerned about the wording on the motion.
Well, that's where we find out what the study says, and then we make decisions afterward. We don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves.
I don't want to be tricked into the Narragansett residents aren't allowed on their own beach due to the capacity shutting them off, that's all. Very concerned about that, especially more present.
Just to get data. Council Farandi?
I, thank you, Eva. I think it's a long time coming, and, you know, we really need to look at the whole aspect of the beach, every, every aspect of it to make the decisions. I mean, we shouldn't stop dunes, everything else. I mean, I've read it, so I think it's pretty encompassing, and, you know, you have to get your arms around the whole issue first as best as you can, and then you can kind of make some decisions. And this is the first council that's ever really done it, and I'm glad it seems like it's finally getting done.
Anyone from the public wishing to comment? Mr. Warren?
Tom Warren, 26 Jakesway. I'm here tonight to speak as the chairman of the REC Advisory Board. So this, this topic's been discussed for quite some time, and in last spring, we took a lot of public information in our open forum and meetings to find out if this is something we should really look into. And we decided that it was something that needed to be done on a scientific basis to find out the data. This is simply a gather, an information gathering effort, it's nothing more than that. So last July, at our meeting, we had more discussions about it, and I made a motion to have the, sent to the council a request for an RFP. The motion was seconded by Councilwoman Susan Sisalina Bonanno, and the whole board voted unanimously to move this forward to the council. Because we feel that it's information that we need to have for a basis to make other policy decisions in the future. So this isn't about keeping anybody off the beach, this is only about gathering information. And that's what, that's what the REC Board decided to do, was to forward this to the council so we could have sound scientific information to work with. And I just want to give you that clarity of what the REC Board was doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Gokroft?
I want to thank Councilmember Kopeck for clarifying capacity study. I think it's really important that the public understand what we're talking about because there's an enormous amount of misinformation on social media. And I want to stress for the public, especially, that the beach study is not simply focused on how many people we should have on the beach on any given day. Yes, this firm is going to analyze beach overcrowding, including its effects on ecological and safety issues related to the beach. However, there are approximately 20 data products that the town will receive from this proposed study for a relatively modest investment when compared to other recently funded studies. And just some highlights that this company is proposing. The physical beach analysis will include a summary of all currently available data about the beach. They'll conduct new beach profile studies that will be compared with the LiDAR data that we do have to determine accurate sand volume changes. Sediment movement pathways and areas of sand accretion and erosion will be determined to assist with sand replenishment planning. Mean high water position changes and shoreline position data will be provided. The study will include an analysis of sea level rise trends at the beach and prediction of beach loss due to sea level rise estimates over the next decade, which will be of great assistance in making future management and operation decisions. It will also include an analysis of dune grass coverage and determine areas for planting to assist with erosion prevention. Dune grass restoration was one of the chief recommendations that came out of the Beach Sustainability Working Group report in 2015, and it hasn't been undertaken because we have no data to support the activity. The town will also receive data related to the length of tourist beach trips, including group size, their additional activities in town, estimates of how much they spend on food, drink, parking, souvenirs. We've never analyzed this. People contend that non-resident beachgoers spend money at local businesses, but we have no real data to understand tourist activity. Data related to the usage of beach bathrooms and showers will also be provided to help the town better understand water usage at the beach, and recommendations for how water can be conserved at the beach will be made. Recommendations will also be provided to ensure safe evacuation and rescue activities. So in summary, this comprehensive report will assist the town for years to come. We need to plan for our future using data and make decisions that are not based on best guesses any longer. We've heard on social media from a lot of people that are non-residents who are afraid that if this beach study goes forward, their access to the beach will be curtailed or denied, and that is absolutely not the case. The fear is unfounded, and it's based on hype from a few individuals who are not town residents. Let's take a step forward, get the data we need to sustain our beach, and thank you very, very, very much for considering this.
Thank you. Mr. Lynch?
Gail mentioned the Narragansett Town Beach Sustainability Study. That was a work group that was formed in 2014 that was composed, I was the chairman of the Conservation Commission at the time, and I became the chair of this sustainability work group. It was composed of members of the Conservation Commission, the REC Advisory Board, and professionals from the University of Rhode Island. We worked for a year and a half, and we, at the same time, the comprehensive plan was being formulated. And we, after a year and a half deliberations, working with other groups and stakeholders, we made recommendations that did, in fact, get inserted in the comprehensive plan. And if you go to the comprehensive plan, the action plan part of it, and you go to natural resources, there are very specific tasks, action steps that are called out in the comprehensive plan. Develop short-term approaches to reestablish and protect coastal dunes. Continue to evaluate, that's one. Continue to evaluate and establish long-term reclamation strategies to address the impacts of erosion and sea level rise at the town beach, that's two. Number three, monitor the beach profile for continued sand replenishment, consider a plan for dune replenishment, and consider new materials such as pervious asphalt for the parking lot services, that's three. Fourth action step here is to analyze the impact of sea level rise, which may have a need to elevate certain beach structures. So those are, those are stamped into the comprehensive plan as action steps the town had agreed to undertake, which unfortunately, we have not really moved forward on them in the eight years since, since those were voted on by the town council. And as you heard Gail say, many, there's a real echoing effect of a lot of those steps with the consulting activities of the bidder, the successful bidder that came before you tonight. So I would just want you to understand, this is a long-term continuum of numbers of people in the pier who really do want to protect and sustain the town beach. And I think sustain, the last part of the, of the description by the bidder is about working towards sustainability. We have a very precious asset here. We are the stewards of that asset and need to take care of it for ecological reasons, for the enjoyment of the populations that come here in some very turbulent climate circumstances that we have in front of us. So I really do urge you to move forward on this. Is there a timer on the?
Yeah, you're just, you're done. Just 10 seconds.
If I can just finish with funding. I, I, I think the ideas that Deb came up with are excellent to follow through. I just would urge you not to have funding steps delay moving forward with this. So this can be funded first through the Enterprise Fund. It would represent about a 3.5% of the Enterprise Fund balance, a very reasonable percentage of such an important long-term study. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Anyone else from the public wishing to comment? If not, any other council comments?
I just, I would make this to Jim, but he's not here, so I will make it to Director Kershaw. The bidder that sounds like we're going to approve, they do have a deadline, so we're going to need to move very quickly on this because they need to come out to do surveys and such in the, in the summer. So Jim's back. So Jim, should the council choose, which looks like we're going to passage for this, they do have a deadline written on the contract, so we'll need to turn around and have that, this bid awarded to them so they can actually have time to conduct the studies.
If we want it done this summer, it has to be swift.
So I'm hoping you can help us out. Thank you.
Okay. All right, with that being said, so again, this is just to get data, and then data comes back to us and we make decisions moving forward after we get the data. So, so again, I will read the motion, a motion to award the bid for Narragansett Town Beach Carrying Capacity Study to the lowest bidder, Taylor Engineering Incorporated, in the amount of $146,777. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion by Council Lawler, seconded by Council Kopeck, motion passes 5-0. Next on the agenda, we have a motion to approve the services for rejuvenator penetrating surface treatments of asphalt pavements for Public Works from Felix A. Marino Company Incorporated at their quoted unit price and hourly rates in the amount not to exceed $100,000 utilizing the Town of Exeter, Rhode Island contract.
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Yep.
Just one question. Is this, I don't know if anybody thinks Public Works, or Jim, is this the crack sealing where they go around and just seal different cracks in the town, on the roads? Or is this some, some sort of, like, top pavement, you know?
Some of it is, but Steve, it's a treatment they put on the, to extend the life quality of it.
Thank you, Steve.
How are you tonight?
Good, thank you.
Good. The last meeting, we approved the crack filling, where they fill the cracks.
Okay.
This one is a rejuvenating bid. What they do is they reinstitute chemicals into the asphalt to replace what has come out of it over time.
I see.
And what it does is it makes the asphalt more pliable so that those tiny hairline cracks will work back together and help to seal the road back together. It's a maintenance item that we are trying to institute. It's, it's new to us, but they've been doing it for years in other communities. And the hope is to hit it now so that we don't have to spend more later. Because we're doing, this is, most of this is going to be on roads that we've already reconstructed, but we need to maintain them, because if we don't maintain them, we're going to be redoing them again. Some of these roads were done 10 years ago that we're looking at doing. So there is a whole website dedicated to it, on Felix A. Marino's website, and it explains it really well.
Yeah, I did look at that. It was just, I just, I thought it was something new. I just wanted to understand the concept, so anything to save the roads a little bit.
The last meeting was the crack filling, that you see all the lines on the road. And we're going to start all this stuff after July 1.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions from the council? Anyone from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion by Council Lawler, seconded by Council Kopeck, motion passes 5-0.
Eva, could I, I'm sorry for interrupting, but I know we usually do this at the beginning of new business, but is there any chance we could move N1 up to now? I know that there's a couple of folks here. This is the Land Conservancy Trust item.
Which one is it?
And otherwise, they're going to have to be here for the rest of the meeting. It's the last one, last one on the, on the agenda.
I think I should go quickly.
Because I think there's some folks with Tom.
I didn't think, I didn't think we had anyone speaking on it. I thought it was.
I think they just wanted to explain it, but.
Okay, I'd rather just stay with the.
All right. I just thought I'd ask.
Yeah, thanks, yeah, no, go quick. Okay, so next is a motion to introduce, read, pass, and accept as a first reading an ordinance and amendment of Chapter 731 of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Narragansett, Rhode Island, entitled "An Ordinance in Relation to Zoning," specifically Sections 2.2, Definitions 6.3, Prohibited Uses, and 7.22, Retail Sales of Marijuana.
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion from the council?
Eva, I'd like to, I don't know if it's, if it's, I know we had the public hearing, but is it, is it possible to make a motion to just have that in the industrial zones? If I can get a second.
I, I was going to do the same thing, so happy to second Steve.
Okay, so somebody just needs to make a motion to make an amendment on this to include, to change to, from business zones to industrial zones, and then, I don't know if there was, I know there's discussion about the time.
10 to 5.
And then, 10 to 5, is that?
Correct.
So you're changing it to, or you're adding it as a possibility?
Changing.
Changing it to industrial zone in 10, 10, what is it, 10 to 5 p.m.?
Let's just make sure Steve thinks that, you know, I'm just curious of your opinion legally.
So if, obviously, you're right to change it to an industrial zone, which you saw on one zone, basically, is right next to each other. But we would then have to go back and rewrite the ordinance, because the way the ordinance is written, you're within a certain area of 108. So the industrial zone, you have to allow it. And with the industrial zone in the north end of town isn't within a half mile of 108, the industrial zone in the south end may not totally be in 108, so we'd have to rewrite it. The problem, which, which we can do, problem with rewriting it is if a license gets issued in the interim, they can go anywhere, and there will be a regular business, because they would essentially be allowed as a regular business. So if you do change it to industrial, you're right, we would have to, we would have to rewrite the entire ordinance or part of the ordinance, because part of our ordinance is you have to be, is in a half a mile of 108. You put in an industrial zone, there's no industrial zone within a half mile of 108, and therefore, it's nowhere in the town, which we're not allowed to do.
Now, that was per the state requirements, or that was the.
That was, so we'd have to take that out, we'd have to take the 108 out, we'd have to put in the industrial zones, and then we'd, we'd then have to look at the industri, it would, we'd have to basically not start the process over. We would have to rewrite it. You just couldn't do it with a simple amendment because of lot size. The current lot size that we have, there may not be any industrial zone lot sizes that, and we, and that would fit into this. So we'd basically have to go through the process again, which, fine doing. In Cranston, we have it in industrial zones, however, you run the risk of a license being issued in the interim, and that licensing being able to go anywhere that a business can go in the town of Narragansett.
Was there a grace, was there a grace period on when the, you know?
Well, we are in a grace period, so it's. Well, we are in a grace period, so it's, you know, if the state had its act together-
When is the, when is the drop dead date, for like a better word?
The state doesn't tell us when they're going to issue the licenses. Everything's ready to go. As soon as the Cannabis Commission sits, they'll start issuing the licenses. So, that's, that's, I can't, I can't tell.
Tomorrow, two weeks, a week, you know, a month?
The grace period, if the state had its act together, would have been six months ago. The only reason why we kind of lucked out is because the governor didn't appoint the people to the Cannabis Commission in a timely manner. That gave the cities and towns enough time to do this.
Steve, can I just, can I just, I think you were saying Route 108, but you actually mean Route 1, don't you? It's a half a mile within, within a half a mile of Rhode Island, Route 1?
Within a half a mile of, yeah, within a half a mile of Route 1. Yeah, so whatever that radius is, definitely doesn't include the road end.
Right, right. That's why I just wanted to make that point, yeah.
And maybe doesn't include part of Walt's Way. So, again, you got to have, which, again, we can go back and rewrite it. That's not a problem.
I'm fine with it.
The problem then becomes is we have to then look at those lots, see the size of those lots, potentially change all our screening ordinances because screening works different in industrial zones as opposed to business zones, site circulation, other items like that. So, it becomes a different type of ordinance. And again, we have it in an industrial zone in Cranston because of, it's in Howard Industrial Park. However, it's an entire, you have to analyze it entirely different. And again, the two industrial zones in Narragansett aren't off state highways, they're off town roads, so that creates another issue too. So, we, that's basically, but you can send us back, but that's what, what we need to do.
108 to state road, but the offset is, you know, South Pier, is it South Pier there? Isn't that a state road?
Yeah, I don't think South Pier is a state, I don't believe South, South Pier is a state road.
It is, because we can't get it paved.
I thought it's a state because of we can't get, we can't get it paved.
It's a state road.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Well, the state's going to pave it, but it's not part of the road thing, so.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the council?
No, I would second Steve's amendment to send it, well, I guess we'll be saying to send it back to the planning board for them to be able to reword it, similar to what South Kingstown has done to industrial zones with the time from 10 to 5, but include the actual routes.
I mean, could it be turned around by, by the, our community development, Mr. DeLuca? I mean, we're going to be, just have to go back to the planning board, the whole thing? And the adjustment to-
Well, it's up to you guys whether you want to send it back because it's an amendment, but-
I mean, are you looking for like-
It's up to you whether you want to send it back to planning, but I would need community development, we need to basically look at all those lots in there.
So, are you saying, Steve, that you'd be able to do it without having to go back to planning?
It's an amendment, so.
It's the prerogative of the council to, to direct us to make any changes that you think that should be made. The planning board has spoken, you've seen their recommendation.
Yes.
You could send it back to them if you wanted, but you're not obligated to.
Okay.
As Steve says, we will have to go through the entire ordinance and revamp it if that, if that is the will of the council. It won't be something we can do quickly, that's all we can-
But, would the planning board actually need to do it, or could Mr. Marsala do it without the planning board?
It's a team effort.
Yeah, no, so it's just a-
Well, I mean, community development, but I'm actually talking about getting it on to a planning board agenda versus having you guys work it out in a conference room someplace.
It's up to you. If you wanted to go on the planning board agenda, we'll put it on. If not, we will bring back to you what you have directed us to do.
If the time is of the essence and it can be done, you know, through the planner and for the legality, I don't know if it needs to go back to the planning board for another bring it days. We're only looking at the legal aspect of it. If it's the prerogatory of the council to do this, I mean, I would rather it be quicker because, I mean, Steve, you're saying time is of the essence, so it would be expeditious to go back to the community development if that's, to rework the lot sizes, if that's what the-
I mean, you can certainly send it back to plan. In other words, planning, at the planning board meeting, they basically already said they didn't want it in an industrial zone because they would have given a recommendation to put it in an industrial zone. So, if you want to, you can send it back to planning for them to tell you that they don't want it in an industrial zone because they didn't, they would have sent a recommendation up to you.
No, I realize that. Can, can Mr. DeLuca be directed to look into it without going to the planning board? That's my question.
I would send it back.
Or a question.
I would send it back.
You would send it back?
I would send it, after we do what we got to do, I would send it back. Because I don't want any problems by not sending it back.
Yeah.
So, I mean, me and Mike can certainly revamp everything, but we, I would send it back.
What, what are your concerns if you revamp it? What, what risk are you saying the town could be at?
The, the only risk would be is that a license gets issued and the, then it becomes a pre-existing non-conforming use because the zoning ordinance isn't in place. So, they're a normal, under state law, they're a normal business.
Mm-hmm.
We're allowed to regulate time, place, and manner. If they're a normal business, they'd be able to go in a BA or a BB zone.
As a retail, as a retail business, they would go anywhere in a BA or BB zone.
Waited this long.
So.
I don't, I don't know. I, I-
Let's take the vote, that's all, you know?
Yeah.
What kind of discussion?
I'm just concerned because there-
There's an amendment on the, on the motion.
Yeah, there's an amendment. So, I don't know if there are any other comments from the council regarding, you know, we are, there is an amendment on the table. It's a motion to-
A motion to, to direct Attorney Marsala and Community Development to rewrite the ordinance to the speculative of industrial zone with the time from 10 to 5 to mirror what South Kingstown has.
Okay, there's an amendment. So, yeah, so would you, I don't, I don't-
Catherine.
Whoever's, I can't, everyone's blocking me. Somebody in the back? So, I apologize. So, um-
Catherine, yep.
There's no, do you have a comment on the amendment? It's a comment. So, so basically, you're, you can come up to say you support the amendment or you oppose the amendment as, as like a public comment.
Come to the microphone, Catherine.
You can come to the micro, come to the microphone and state your name and address, please.
Hi, Catherine Kenevian, 190 Clock Road, Narragansett. I just, I don't agree with it going industrial. I think it should stay the way it is. If you go industrial, they've already said that we don't have parking and things that we need if it's going to be in an industrial area. They've already researched the industrial areas from what I can understand. I think it, it should stay as is because the one industrial area you talked about was down in Galilee, and I don't think it belongs down there, and I think we already have a parking issue down there, and it's just going to make it even worse. So, that's just my comment. Thank you.
Ms. Salaberto.
Catherine Salaberto, 48 Earl's Court. Galilee is exempt, just like the urban renewal area. I finally read Note 1, and so the urban renewal area in Galilee are exempt. As far as an industrial area, I've been up there, there's plenty of parking, so I would support an amendment, but I want to add my own amendment, which is 500 feet from a school or church or whatever is just not far enough. So, I'd like to see that amended to a longer distance. Thank you.
Mr. Lynch?
Dennis Lynch, 22 Central. The, if you are thinking about up Ferry Road, that, I don't know what's going to go, that, what would be the impact to traffic flow there? That is a very, very difficult light to negotiate, even without summer hours. Once summer hours get there, it doesn't seem as if the traffic design is at all to put volume traffic into that industrial park if that's an area that you're thinking about. And the retail, the retail flow and all of the traffic lights and lanes of traffic that flow through Salt Pond seem much more conducive to it. So, I would offer that as something to consider as well in terms of what the traffic impact might be. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Okay, so there's a motion on the table to amend the motion to, sorry, what was it again? Sorry, I didn't write it down.
Industrial zone. Industrial zone.
Yeah, industrial zone.
From 10 to 5, similar to what South Kingstown has. Oops, sorry, my microphone wasn't on. It's Steve's amendment, so it's, is to amend to the industrial zone, Steve?
Industrial zones only within the, you know, the two zones.
With the hours of 10 to 5.
That was a 10 to 5.
Nobody's changing those, so you don't even need that. You don't need, it's already there.
Okay, so that's the motion, the amendment. So, this would just be sending it to, you're just going to have, you're recommending that they work on it and not send it to planning and zoning. Correct? So, then it would come back to us?
Correct.
Okay.
An amendment to the-
It's the amendment. So, I sort of have concerns about the timeline of it. I don't, I would like to know more of a definitive timeline. So, if I'm hearing it's going to take a while, to us, it's a little bit of an urgency if there is an amendment made. Okay, well, because I would like to see it in industrial zone, but I don't want to delay it any longer. So, the motion to amend, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
I voted with you guys. I already said aye.
Aye, okay. All right, I was no, so motion passes, the amendment passes 3-2.
Can I read that back to you for clarification?
Sure.
I just want to make sure I got it right.
Sure, thank you.
Motion, motion to amend to change to industrial zones and from 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. without going back to planning and zoning.
Yeah. That was, okay. Yeah, so that was motion by Counsel Ferandi, seconded by Counsel Lawler. Motion passes, amendment passes 3-2. Do I have to go back to the main motion?
Passed 4-1.
No, I said no.
Oh, you said no?
So, it was 3, yeah.
Oh, okay. So, 3-2, and then, main motion.
So, all right, going back to the main, main motion is amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
All opposed? No, so 3-2. All right, so moving along. Next, we have a motion to read, pass, and adopt as a second reading an ordinance and amendment of Chapter 731 of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Narragansett, Rhode Island, entitled "An Ordinance in Relation to Zoning as it relates to text revisions related to wetland regulation."
So moved.
Second?
Okay, so second reading, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion by Counsel Lawler, seconded by Counsel Kopeck. Motion passes 5-0. Next, from the engineering department, we have a motion to award the bid for the purchase of sodium hypochlorite for water division to the lowest bidder, Heart Growth Chemicals Incorporated, at $59.60 per 15-gallon tamper-resistant drum for 12.5% to 15% sodium hypochlorite solution for a two-year period.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion from the council? Anyone from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion by Counsel Lawler, seconded by Counsel Kopeck. Motion passes 5-0. Next is a motion to authorize the town manager to sign a successor agreement with the University of Rhode Island relative to the lease of flow space at the regional wastewater treatment facilities in the amount of $70,000 annually for a two-year period.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion from the council? Anyone from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion by Counsel Lawler, seconded by Counsel Kopeck. Motion passes 5-0. Next is a motion to award the contract for comprehensive wastewater facilities plan with Wright Pierce in the amount of $393,000.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion from the council?
I have a question.
Sure.
Is this being paid for by a grant? Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Tenney? Okay, that's all I wanted to know. It seems like a lot of money.
Okay, anyone from the public? Oh, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion by Counsel Lawler, seconded by Counsel Kopeck. Motion passes 5-0. Next, from the information technology department, we have a motion to approve the annual renewal of Asset Essentials Enterprise for fiscal year 2024 for information technology from Brightly in the amount of $19,172.53.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion from the council? Anyone from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion by Counsel Lawler, seconded by Counsel Kopeck. Motion passes 5-0. Next, up-
4-0. Did you say 4? Oh, sorry. Never mind.
5-0. Next up from, is a motion to approve the annual agreement for Barracuda Unlimited Cloud Backup Storage and Support for Fiscal Year FY 2024 purchased through Zones LLC in the amount of $13,100.52.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion from the council? Anyone from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion by Counsel Lawler, seconded by Counsel Kopeck. Motion passes 5-0. Next is a motion to approve the renewal of the Viewpoint Open Gov Application Services with Open Gov Incorporated in the amount of $20,189.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion from the council? Anyone from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion by Counsel Lawler, seconded by Counsel Kopeck. Motion passes 5-0. Next, from the town manager, is a motion to read, pass, and adopt as a second reading a resolution amending the official list of parking restrictions and regulations in the Town of Narragansett in accordance with the Narragansett Code of Ordinances to restrict parking between May 15th and September 15th, between 6 a.m. and 5 p.m. to include, in addition to existing restrictions, for Boone Street, three-hour limit on the west side of the street from Central Street to Perkins Avenue, and parking is prohibited on the east side of the street. Ocean Road, three-hour limit on both sides of the street for the full length from Beach Street Traffic Signal and South Pier Road. Narragansett Avenue, three-hour limit on both sides of the street for the full length, except where currently permitted, between Beach Street Traffic Signal and the Caswell-Narragansett Avenue intersection. Cogden Street, three-hour limit parking resident permit allowance on the north side of the street from Boone Street to Ocean Road. Rodman Street, three-hour limit parking resident permit allowance on both sides of the street from Boone Street to Fifth Avenue and on the north side of Fifth Avenue to its western terminus. Caswell Street, three-hour limit parking resident permit allowance on both sides, south of Rodman Street to its southern terminus. Rockland Street, three-hour limit parking resident permit allowance on the east side from Kingstown Road to the southern terminus. Robinson Street, three-hour limit parking resident permit allowance on the west side for the full length between Narragansett Avenue to its southern terminus. Rose Court, three-hour limit parking resident permit allowance on the west side of the street for its full length between Rodman Street and Cogden Street. And Perkins Avenue, three-hour limit parking resident permit allowance on the north side of the street for its full length between Boone Street and its eastern terminus.
So moved.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Can we have, I know this is unusual for a second hearing, but can we have a little discussion about this?
It's just second reading, so.
I understand, I know.
So it's just an up or down vote on this one.
There's gonna be no discussion? I'm abstaining.
It's a second reading, so all second readings do not have discussion. It just goes through. And I know everyone's voiced their concerns, we've gotten emails, and, and so it can be, it's just moving this forward so that, obviously, there's a lot of variables that need to be worked out. So the, the reason this is moving forward is so that it's approved, so that there can be a plan. And then, of course, it can always come back to be tweaked, but nothing can happen.
Who will work out the variables? Who will be the ones working out the variables?
Well, we're, this is, this is the town managers. So this, once we approve the, once this moves forward, the town manager implements the plan, is in charge of the plan. So we are in charge of ordinances, and the town manager is in charge of executing the ordinances. And if there's any issues that arise, he will bring them back to the council, and we can always change things or make amendments because there is a process that's going to be involved to roll something out like this. It is a big change, and there's signage, there's all that. So it's basically just moving it forward. And so, again, it's a second reading, we had a public hearing, we had the first reading last time.
We didn't have a public hearing about this.
We, it was, this is, we did, we did. We had, we had the public hearing.
So just, I just want to say one thing, and that is, I have lots to say, but I won't say it. But one thing that I wanted to say is that when we did the first, you're right, we did have a public hearing, and when we had that, one of the concerns, I raised a couple of concerns at the time, but one of the things I didn't do was I didn't actually look at the specific streets and where they, where their terminus was, et cetera. And there's a couple that really need to be considered, but I can pass that information on to Mr. Tierney if that's how you want to do it. But I, I think that we have some, you know, some pretty big holes in here that we probably should make sure we fix. And so I just, that's what I wanted to talk about, but if, you know, I can do it a different way. That's fine.
We, we'll, we'll address that. We definitely will. I know that it's, there's a lot of stuff in there.
Well, we say that, but I mean, you know, we addressed, you know, I brought up the other areas of concern, and that was just sort of like, you know, go ahead, Deb, say what you want to say, and that was the end of that. So we didn't discuss them, we didn't decide anything about them. And so I just, I feel like this is an incomplete process, but like I said, if we are required to vote now, that's fine, I'll vote.
This is just to move it forward, like I said.
I understand, I understand.
Yeah, that's all it is, that's all it is. And again, there are like, there is a lot of work to be done. So, yeah, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
No.
Abstain.
Okay, motion by Councilor Lawler, seconded by Councilor Kopeck, motion passes three, one nay, and one abstention. Next, from the town clerk, is a motion to approve a pedlar license for Ann Smith doing business as Love Buggies Boutique, subject to local and state regulations.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion from the council? Anyone from?
I'm a little, I'm a little confused about peddler's licenses. I don't quite understand, I mean, there's a couple of them here, and so these are folks that would actually, it's not the same thing as a truck driving around, or is it the same thing as a truck driving around?
No, it is not. Some of them could, it could be by a truck, by a cart.
Okay. Or with a cart or something?
They're not selling food.
Right.
The food makes it the MFE.
That, that was what confused me. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any discussion from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion by Councilor Lawler, seconded by Councilor Kopeck, motion passes five, zero. Next is a motion to approve a pedlar license and a holiday license for Sky Parker Company doing business as Kit Kites, located at 18 Pier Marketplace, Narragansett, Rhode Island, subject to local and state regulations.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion from the council? Anyone from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion by Councilor Lawler, seconded by Councilor Kopeck, motion passes five, zero. Next is a motion to approve a victual license and a holiday license for Galleria Dolce LLC, doing business as Galleria Dolce, 140 Point Judith Road, Unit 13, Narragansett, Rhode Island, subject to local and state regulations.
So moved.
A second.
Any discussion from the council? Anyone from the public?
Catherine.
Ms. Salaberto?
Catherine Salaberto, 48, Earl's Court. I had a question about the one before. You didn't look up to take public comments, so you didn't acknowledge me. I have a concern.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
About the number of businesses that are changing hands and coming in and out of the pier marketplace. We have vacancies in the pier marketplace, and we have a lot of new businesses. There was this t-shirt sweatshirt shop that I thought was doing great, and now there's a, you know, Gansett Poké is there. Somebody has to stop monitoring this. Can people not make it in this town? You know, is there any, I think, I don't know, if somebody wants to come into town, we should have some kind of vehicle where they could speak to somebody maybe in Town Hall or get some kind of advice or something. It's just a lot of new businesses, and, and I don't know what's going on here, you know? Businesses are changing hands and all of that. And I really think that, really, we should have somebody in Town Hall that could advise these people.
Thank you, yeah, but this is, so this was a motion to approve.
I know what it is, I know what it is.
So you do support or, or, not support. Okay, so motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion by Councilor Lawler, seconded by Council, Councilor Kopeck, motion passes four, four, zero. Next is a motion to approve a victual license and a holiday license for On Point Pizza LLC, doing business, On Point Pizza, located at 855 Point Judith Road, Narragansett, Rhode Island, subject to local and state regulations.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion from the council? Anyone from the public?
Me too.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion by Councilor Lawler, seconded by Councilor Kopeck, motion passes four, zero. Next is a motion to approve a victual license from LG's Diner, Point Judith LLC, doing business as Tommy D's Diner, located at 120 Knolls Way Extension, Narragansett, Rhode Island, subject to local and state regulations.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion from the council? Anyone from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passes, I mean, motion by Councilor Lawler, seconded by Councilor Kopeck, motion passes four, zero. Lastly, from the town council, is a motion to direct the town manager, the assistant solicitor, the chair of the Narragansett Land Conservancy Trust to develop a draft preservation easement with Preserve Rhode Island by no later than October 31st, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and just as a discussion point, this is coming from myself and Councilor Kopeck, and it's just, it's a recommendation from the Land Conservancy Trust.